I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. The next recommended action is going into closed session and the board, the recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, and appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees or legal counsel. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to recommend that the item within the closed session regarding the waiver be moved to open session for discussion.
We did check with the attorneys and it is appropriate for the closed session.
It is appropriate, but it isn't required. The board may discuss it in open session or closed session. I think it would be more appropriate to have the discussion in open session.
Is there a motion?
No, there's no motion. The motion right now on the floor is to enter into closed session. And Mr. Dombrowski is asking us to remove one of the items.
Do you want to make a motion to do that?
I did say I move that, the board move that, but I can also make a motion to move the waiver discussion to open session.
Second.
I'm not certain if that's appropriate, but at this point, let's go ahead and do that. All right, so you've got the discussion in regards to the waiver. Any comments?
So the motion is whether or not to do that in open session.
So we, yes, so do you want, I need a vote on the motion to bring the waiver into open session as opposed to in closed session? Is there discussion in regards to that? He made a motion.
Right. There was, was there already a motion on the floor though? Does this have to be an addendum? I want to make sure we do this.
The motion is to go into closed session.
I understand what the motion is. Was there a previous, did you already bring up a motion to move into closed session?
I asked for, I asked for the motion to go into closed session. So, and I apologize, I'm not exactly certain. I didn't have a motion to go into closed session. I did not bring my Roberts rules. We can ask our attorney in regards to this. We can go into closed session. We can ask our attorney for some input. Dr. Small, do you have some input for me?
Mary Sue, can you, on the original motion that Mrs. Klimkowitz read, do we have a first and a second on that?
We had Mr. Rosenbloom first and Ms. Cavill second.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
So now we have the next motion on the table for change.
Okay, so I've got a motion on the floor, I'm sorry, I apologize. So we've got the motion on the floor. I asked for discussion. So, Mr. Dombrowski is bringing forward another motion that doesn't relate to this unless you want to make a, an amendment to this motion.
No, I believe this is a subordinate motion, which is voted upon first before the primary motion.
I don't think so because we have to deal with the motion and if there's an amendment. Do you want to make an amendment to this?
I don't believe that the motion has to be amended. There can be a subordinate motion.
Actually, the motion includes probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body. And his motion or request is regarding a waiver associated with probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body. So it would be an amendment to remove that.
That's the way I would interpret it also.
If I may, the original motion has three different exemptions to open session. The topic that's being talked about right now, whether it is discussed in open or closed session, does not change the three motions that are needed to go into closed session.
Okay.
What I'm asking is, do we have to deal with the original motion first before we can get to this motion, which then would nullify his request? How do we do this in a way that's supposed to follow the Roberts Rules of Order? And I'm sorry, I'm not an expert on those rules. We haven't, but previously in similar situations, we've only ever had amendments. So this is the first I'm hearing about whatever Mr. Kramer's suggesting. I don't know how we do this in a way that follows the protocols.
And, and I apologize, I'm not certain either. I'm...
Do we need to call a five-minute recess?
Yes.
Let me withdraw my motion, or I would ask Mr. Dombrowski withdraw his motion and to propose an amended motion to remove that particular item from closed session.
But part of that problem is, we still need to, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Small, we need to talk about the imminent litigation and specifics of the legal counsel, correct?
The, the three exceptions that are on the recommended action are needed for closed session. We cannot remove any of the three at this point in order to complete all of our closed session topics.
I request, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't think I can make another motion. I request that we take a five-minute recess to figure this out, rather than just waffling pointlessly. I feel like that will be a faster way to get to whatever the solution is. Take a five-minute recess and figure this out and then come back and execute the business, right?
Do I, do I have a second on a brief recess because we do have the attorney here?
I second that.
Okay. Okay. I'm not certain if I need a...
Are we taking a recess now?
Yeah, we're gonna take a recess.
Okay, then I need, I'm gonna leave the table.
Okay, we're reconvening then at 6:46 PM. The direction that I have is we will vote on the motion that Mr. Dombrowski had made and that Mr. Kramer had seconded. This is part of our discussion right now in regards to that. I really want to stress that this topic is very appropriate for our closed session because it does deal with attorneys and legal issues. And it's also a confidential topic that needs to be done in closed session. Is there any other discussion before we vote on that?
Recall that nothing, just because it can go into closed session doesn't mean it has to. Okay, so we have to differentiate there.
This would be appropriate for closed session.
But it doesn't have to go into closed session.
Any other comments?
I would just like to add that although it is a legal matter, although it does benefit certain parties, the confidentiality, I think the people we represent aren't benefited by that confidentiality. I think it, it's the opposite. I think it's at the detriment to our community to have that discussion in closed session.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
We're voting on, we're voting on Mr. Dombrowski's motion.
I thought we were doing the attendance.
Yeah, no, no. And then we'll go back to the original motion to go into closed session with everything. So, please. Ms. Kason.
Mr. Bradley.
No.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Yes.
Ms. Cavill.
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
No.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
No. All right, that takes us back to the original motion. Is there any other discussion on the original motion? Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
No.
Mr. Dombrowski.
No.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Thank you. All right, the recommended action is that the Board of Education return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That will lead us to our recognition portion and Dr. Small.
Thank you. Will Josh Schumacher, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, please come forward and introduce to us some wonderfully successful student athletes and their parents?
Absolutely. Board of Education and Dr. Small, thank you so much for taking time tonight to honor some of our incredibly talented athletes that we have in front of us. Students, as your coach or sponsor introduces you, please walk forward, receive your award, and stand next to the podium as they speak about you. Additionally, I'm going to ask family members who are here with their athletes tonight to please stand and be recognized when instructed to by the coach. Helping present the students tonight are Palatine High School Principal Toni Medina, Athletic Director Luis Arroyo, Hoffman Estates High School Athletic Director Steve Lackney, Schaumburg High School Athletic Director Marty Manning, and from Fremd High School, Athletic Director David Dick, and incoming Athletic Director Hameed Maryaskiwi. First, on our docket tonight and our agenda is, I'm gonna read you the coach, even though the coach isn't here, because I think it's helpful to talk about the coach, and then Mr. Dick is going to speak about the athletes. So tonight, our first team we're going to introduce and honor is Fremd High School Badminton. And the coach, Bob Hanson, has been a special education and PE teacher at Fremd High School and just completed his 22nd year as the head Badminton coach. During his tenure, Fremd has captured 10 IHSA state trophies, including three state championships. Since Bob was not able to be here tonight with us, the athletes will be introduced by Fremd Athletic Director David Dick.
Thank you. Coach Hanson had a family situation arise, is sorry he cannot be here tonight, but wants to thank Dr. Small and the board for being invited here to be recognized. As Josh said, this year's team finished second in state, a half point behind the first-place team in a very competitive state series. He wants to thank all of the girls for their outstanding level of commitment to the Fremd Badminton program. They all are a true definition of a student athlete. They're actively and successfully involved in not only badminton, but also everything they do at Fremd. Good luck to all the seniors on this year's team, they will be sorely missed. I am so proud to be your coach. At this time, I would like to introduce the team in this order. Samantha Yi. The following team finished fourth overall at the state series. First up, Yi Ji Li. And her partner Maggie Wu. This next pair finished second in the state, at the state series, Jocelyn Vedica. And Sashi Talu. Finally, I would like to have all the parents of these young ladies stand and be recognized at this time. Thank you, Dr. Small and the Board of Education for this recognition.
Next tonight, we'd like to recognize the Palatine High School Boys Gymnastics Team. Scott Hegel is a nationally board-certified teacher and the chairman of the Palatine High School Wellness Department. In addition to coaching, Mr. Hegel is also a gymnastics judge and was inducted into the Illinois High School Gymnastics Coaching Association Hall of Fame in 2018. Scott just completed his 22nd year as a boys gymnastics coach. Scott's teams have qualified for state nine times and placed in state four times, including this season's state championship. Scott.
It's a true honor for our team to be here with you today. We are fortunate to have the best boys gymnastics team in school history this year and a lot of accomplishments along the way. We won the West Division, scored a season high at the sectional meet to win and qualified at the state meet. Going into the state meet, we're the top-ranked team, and our team stepped up in a big way and delivered the highest boys gymnastics team score that any team in Illinois has scored in the last 18 years to win the state championship. It's my privilege to introduce the members of the team that are here today. Starting off with one of our volunteer coaches, Coach Christian Lunsford. Also proud to say Christian is our new boys gymnastics head coach for next season. With us from the team, we have freshman all-rounder Tanish Mattel and his parents Shruti and Amit. Junior all-rounder and state floor qualifier Jalen Rover. Junior all-rounder Ricardo Vatal. And finally, junior all-rounder John Perone. John is joined by his parents Lisa and John. And aside from helping our team win a state championship, John had an amazing state championship weekend. He was the state all-around champion on Friday, and followed that up on the next day by taking fifth on high bar, third on parallel bars, and was the state champion on floor, pommel horse, and still rings. My sincere thanks to the administration and the school board for your support of boys gymnastics in 211. Thank you very much.
Our second boys gymnastics team of the night comes from Hoffman Estates High School. Coach Ryan Brown began his coaching career in District 211 in 2000. He began teaching English at Hoffman Estates High School in 2003. Ryan assumed the boys gymnastics head coaching responsibilities at Hoffman Estates High School in 2011 after six years as an assistant coach. Ryan's teams have qualified for the state tournament twice, and he has qualified individuals for the state tournament in each of his years of coaching. Ryan is also a proud District 211 graduate. Ryan Brown.
So we were very fortunate to be able to compete as a team in the state competition in our own gym. This would be the second time we competed as a team. It had been 20 years since that has happened, so we are very proud of the team for making it that far. Alex Sorwakowicz is the reason why we're here. He is actually being accompanied by my son, who... He loves Alex a lot. Besides the word "no," Alex is the second most used word in our home. So, Alex is a very accomplished gymnast, and this year, along with many others, this year, he was able to, in sectionals, take third on floor, sectional champ on vault. He was fourth on pommel horse, third on P bars, and he was the sectional champ on high bar. Going into the state competition, we expected him to do very well. He qualified on all events, including all-around, and the final results for that, he was, he took fourth on vault, second on P bars, and second on high bar.
Our next coach and team comes to us from Fremd High School. Matt Zaluski is in his ninth year of teaching and has been a member of the math department at Fremd High School for the past three years. In addition to coaching track and field, which what he's here to represent tonight, Matt is also the head boys cross-country coach.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Small, for having us here tonight to recognize two of our athletes who have done so much to help the boys' track program at Fremd High School. First, here with his parents, Matt and Amy, is Theo Cunningham. As a junior in building off qualifying for the state cross-country meet back in November, Theo had a very successful track season. His accomplishments include being the 800-meter conference champion, the 800-meter sectional runner-up, and he earned all-state honors by finishing ninth at the state meet this year in the 800 as well. This season, Theo had personal records of 156 in the 800 and 4 minutes and 20 seconds in the 1600. Our second athlete, unfortunately he's not here tonight, but I would like to recognize him. His name is Will Stewart. Will placed in two events for us at the state meet. He finished third in the 100-meter dash and ninth in the 200-meter dash. And I know he'd like me to say this if he was here, in the prelims, Will actually ran the fastest time of all competitors regardless of class with a wind legal 10.57 seconds. So I know he would want that if he was here for me to talk about that. And he will be continuing his athletic and academic career at St. Louis University. And again, I'd just like to thank the board for us having us here tonight.
Our final team recognition tonight is the Schaumburg High School Girls Track Team. And so we're going to welcome Assistant Coach John Fidler, who's been the throws coach for the girls' track team for the last 10 years, and is also a proud District 211 graduate. Coach?
Thank you very much, Dr. Small, and District 211 School Board members. It is a great honor for me to be able to introduce, introduce Antoneese Williams tonight. Before I forget, I would also like to introduce her mother, who is here with us tonight, Lanise, if she will please stand. I can't describe how proud I am to be able to introduce this wonderful young lady to you all tonight. Exceptionally overcame adversity all year and had not achieved a state qualifying throw mark until the last week. We were always right near the top, we would win a lot of meets, but we could never get to the point where we would qualify for state. And all of a sudden at sectionals, she came up and threw a nice throw, long enough to qualify for state, and we went down state. And in the prelims, she threw a 40-foot shot put, which her personal best going in was 38, and qualified for finals and ended up coming in ninth place, so was able to achieve the all-state honors. One other thing I'd like to mention is she is a, an incredible student athlete, all honors courses across the board, and a straight A student, and is involved in other activities within our athletic department, within our training also, and just a super athlete. She's just a junior, and I'm very proud of her.
Will Coach Brown please come back up near the front towards the podium? Mr. Brown is the Illinois High School Gymnastic Coaches Association Coach of the Year. He is the boys gymnastics head coach at Hoffman Estates, where he's built a legacy of success. You saw the results tonight earlier of his efforts when an athlete from his team was recognized for earning three top medals at the IHSA state competition. Ryan is a graduate of Hoffman Estates High School and teaches English there. In 2013, Ryan was named a finalist for the prestigious Goldlet Apple Award for Excellence for Teaching, putting him in an elite group within Illinois. He's been recognized as a top teacher by the Northwest, in the Northwest suburbs by the Daily Herald. Mr. Brown has sponsored several student clubs and organizations in addition to his coaching, and he credits his success to the guidance of the teachers he encountered when he was a student in District 211. He told us nearly a decade ago that it has already been an awesome journey, and he says that every day he finds another reason to love being in a Hoffman Estates High School Hawk. Ryan, congratulations on your award, and thank you for all that you do for Hoffman Estates High School and to the students for District 211.
Thank you so much to all of our students for the time that you put into your sport. Thank you for the time you put into your academics also, and thank you to the parents for everything that you do. The driving, the late evenings, the early mornings, all of those things, and just being there as a support and being here to support your children. Thank you, that is tremendous. You set wonderful examples, and you know, we see that in our young people. And thank you to Mr. Brown. You deserve the recognition. You spend a lot of time and share your talents with your peers, with your students, and it's obvious to see the connection. So again, thank you very much to everyone here this evening. We will take a couple of minutes to take photos of our people that are here tonight, of our young people, and then we'll reconvene with the public comments section. So we'll take about a five-minute break. Our next item of business is our public comments and hearings. The board welcomes you and is pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, the board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to five minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individual's unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Teniper. So there will be five minutes allotted for public comments tonight. The first speaker is Janet Sullivan, followed by Pat Zibart. Janet?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with the board tonight. My name is Janet Sullivan, and I'm a resident of Palatine and District 211. I'm also a very proud parent of two adult children now who graduated from D-211 schools. Although my kids are grown, I still care a lot about our students and our schools, as I'm sure everyone here does. I see and hear at least three different school buses go by my street every day when school is in session. So I'm here tonight to encourage the board to continue its strong tradition of leadership by expanding its role to include transitioning to zero emission battery power, specifically electric school buses. I support the district's recent move to replacing diesel-powered buses with propane-fueled buses. Propane significantly reduces fewer, produces significantly fewer carbon emissions than diesel, and that is a huge step in reducing greenhouse gas, a major cause of global warming. But propane is still a fossil fuel. I encourage the board to consider the very real consequences of continued reliance on fossil fuels. So why is switching to electric school buses so important? Consider that while buses provide very safe transportation for our kids, diesel exhaust has a negative impact on human health, especially for our children who have a faster breathing rate than adults and whose lungs have not yet fully developed. We all have a very real responsibility to protect our children, provide for their safety and their future. As our bus fleet can... As our bus fleet continues to age, I hope the board will replace those vehicles with electric buses. I know this is a significant budget item. It requires long-term planning. It's not a simple switch from diesel or propane to electric buses. I urge the board to emphasize in its strategic plan, switching to clean energy. I appreciate all of your commitment, time and hard work on the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pat Zibart, followed by Dennis Wagner.
Hello. As Anna said, my name is Pat Zibart. I'm a resident of Hoffman Estates and grandmother of, to three future District 211 students. I'm very hopeful that in 10 years or so, they're going to have a really great experience in the district. And so I'm forward-thinking. I thank you all for deciding to move a part of the bus fleet to propane fuel, which reduces greenhouse gas emissions by 15 to 21% from diesel fuel. And I encourage you to be even more forward-thinking and consider moving to e-buses that reduce emissions by 100%. Janet spoke about the noted health benefits of cleaner air for students, student riders. Also think about the drivers who spend many hours in the buses and the community members where the buses drive. Because electric vehicle motors are so much quieter than diesel or even propane motors, noise pollution's reduced and thereby will improve our mental as well as our physical health. And let's not forget the benefits for the health of our planet when fossil fuels are no longer extracted or burned. We have all observed that electric vehicle use is trending in our country by personal choice and pending regulation. More manufacturers are producing fleet vehicles, EV vehicles. Planning now to replace a portion of District 211's fleet with e-buses will mean staying ahead of the curve and not simply being reactive when forced to make the shift that is inevitable in the near future. There are concerns with that such, such as the mileage range of electric batteries to accommodate sports teams and field trips, you know? It's a real concern. It may be necessary for a while to keep some clean rather than totally green buses in use. However, look at the improvement in battery technology over the last 10 years. We can be hopeful that these improvements will continue. Another factor which U.S. responsible board members always consider is cost. And yes, the new green vehicles are expensive, but in the long run, they will save on fuel, which keeps going up for gas, and maintenance costs. Planning for college, for change now also allows for a few vehicles to be added each fiscal year. And the best news about starting right now is that there's federal funding available from the bipartisan infrastructure bill to help with both the purchase of e-buses and installation of changing stations, charging stations. And I do believe we'll have someone else speaking who can give you some details on how to go for those federal funds. So I want to thank you for your kind attention and listening to me tonight. Especially thank you for all your service to the community.
Thank you. Dennis Wagner, followed by Amy Hartzog.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Wagner. I had two older sons who've been through Fremd, it's been a few years now, and then I have one son starting in fall and am also a resident, of course. Well, first, I wanted to talk about electric vehicles. I did buy an electric lawnmower and, you know, it was cheaper than the gas mowers. So when it makes sense, when it makes financial sense, I'm okay with electric buses. Perhaps not now, though. Anyway, that's not what I'm going to talk about. Here, to talk about a strategic planning. And I just want to go through a couple of the items first. One of the goals or was all District 211 students will demonstrate academic growth and including there's enroll and pass in one AP or dual credit with grades C or better. It sounds great, but the only thing I want to point out is, you know, I got a question. Does anybody ever get below a C minus? I mean, there's kind of called, a friend, they call it a friend C minus, which actually is an F, but they don't want to fail the students. I had a student who took honors class calculus. He got a C. He was falling way behind. They pushed him to the next class. He was completely failing. He was not doing the work. And so then they gave him a C minus and then he, and then they asked me to take the, take the class over. So I do question if you start, if you're going to focus on C or better, then please make C an actual passing grade. The next one, so actually, are we providing an honest assessment and feedback there? The next one was all District 211 students will demonstrate college and career readiness. So a year of five, you have a target of 88%, which is great for math or English benchmarks. But are you saying that 12% of the students graduating, or at least after four years, will not be college or career readiness? I think we need to have some other benchmarks in there, not just math or English. All right, moving on. All District 211 students will experience enhanced safety, well as in learning through the completion of annual facilities and technological improvements enabled by financial stability. So one of the things I want to focus on there is the IT, I'm an IT guy. And you have moving to Office 21 and Windows 11. I'm not really sure how that, how does that enhance safety for the students? How, I should say, how does that, how is measuring, how is that a measure of safety? We really should be focusing on mitigating the risks using the technology, including access to pornography, cyber trafficking and cyberbullying. As parents, we all know that technology can be a blessing and a curse. We should be measuring on actual safety, not just putting in a new software. Most of all, what I didn't see anywhere in the plan was something that instills a sense of hard work, hard work ethics and discipline. Schools today, at least in my opinion, are lacking in the structure and discipline needed to prepare our students for the, for the real world. Too often, we see schools relaxing the standards when it comes to completing homework on time and relaxing grading standards. And then when student behavior declines, we blame external factors only to see a further decline in behavior. If God forbid, a student brings a gun to school, we transfer the student to another school rather than expel them. When tragedy strikes, we ask ourselves, how do we not see that the child was struggling? It's because we're erasing all cultural norms. Our children, even their teenagers, need structure. They thrive on structure. Ask any coach, what would happen to the team if the players were allowed to do whatever they want during practice? It may be fun for a day, but a few, but few of them will return and the, will return and the teams fall apart. The best coaches bring discipline and structure to the field. Why isn't the same in our classrooms? Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Hartz, Amy Hartzog, followed by Eric Bindler.
Hi, I'm Amy Hartzell. I'm a resident and a parent of adult children who graduated from Hoffman Estates High School. My comments supplement those already made supporting electric school buses. First, I would like to thank members of District 211's administration, Transportation Director Diana Mikelsky and Facilities Energy Manager David Greliak for answering my questions about their ongoing efforts related to alternative energy and energy conservation. I applaud them for that work and also for their perseverance through difficulties arising from the pandemic. Going forward, District 211 needs to commit, to commit to clean energy for its facilities as well as for its school buses. One way is to invest in generating its own electricity, which District 211 already started by installing solar panels at some of its facilities. Another way is for the district to require clean energy in its electricity supply agreement with its power supply company, preferably ensuring that a substantial percentage of the electricity is actually sourced from clean energy generation. Mr. Greliak is looking into this. As the largest high school district in Illinois, District 211 is large enough of a customer to have leverage in those negotiations, not only to ensure clean energy sources, but also a workable price, especially as clean energy prices drop below fossil fuel prices. Beyond the price issue, there are benefits to students and their future from District 211 using clean energy sources, which means this is in line with District 211's strategic plan. Clean energy fits nicely into Goal Nine for safety, wellness and learning through facility improvements. Regarding safety and wellness, the benefits to students from reducing pollution and greenhouse gases are obvious. Regarding learning, here's just one example. District 211's environmental science teachers are helping a new generation to consider careers that will result in innovations to solve environmental problems such as pollution and global warming. Have to take this off. Can't forget. Those students choose projects to complete, which could involve studying District 211's clean energy progress and plans. Transportation Director Diana Mikelsky has indicated interest in sharing with those students her progress in reducing school bus pollution and greenhouse gas emissions. That example could also fit into the strategic plan, Goal 10, for students to get involved in telling the District 211 story. Again, thank you to Diana Mikelsky and David Greliak for their concern about our students' future. I ask that the Board of Education support them so that bigger strides can be made toward clean energy sources for the district. Please consider adjusting the Goal Nine wording in the strategic plan to accommodate clean energy sourcing in addition to the existing wording about energy efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Bindler, followed by Brian Mitchell.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you very much for your time. My name is Eric Bindler. I'm a new resident, new homeowner in the district in the Palatine area. Not a parent yet, but I do plan to, to start a family soon and I do hope that my, my children will one day be able to go to school in the district. And so I'm deeply committed to making sure that when I do have kids, they'll have a clean, healthy, safe environment and climate to, to grow up in. The, the final piece of the electric vehicle conversation that I wanted to add to tonight is about the, the funding opportunities. We understand, we certainly appreciate that cost can be a significant barrier in, in investing in this new technology. We, we do want to raise the board's awareness to the extent that this is information you've looked at in the past, but there is a, there's a significant commitment that we're seeing at the federal level as well as at the state level right now to help school districts invest in the transition to electric, to clean buses. There's currently a, an EPA rebate program and if I'm able to, I've got some handouts, just some basic information on the program. I'm happy to send those around. Thank you. Would really, really strongly encourage the board to, to take a look at this if you haven't already. It's a $500 million program for, for school districts to apply for support to, to invest in, in, in clean or fully electric school buses, zero emission school buses. The program's open right now. The window opened up about a month ago. There's about two months left. It closes on August 19th. So again, two more months or so to, to get an application in. Funding is, is for each school district to submit up to, up to 25 buses. So each, each school district is able to replace up to 25 diesel-powered buses with, with either fully electric or, or other types of clean, clean buses. And the amount varies a little bit based on the size of the bus or the fuel type, but the maximum is $250,000 per bus, so pretty significant piece of change there. And up to $13,000 per bus for charging infrastructure as well, which is obviously another significant part of, of the conversation. So again, really hope that you'll all take a, take an opportunity to look at that. But I think even more than that, the, the point that I would want to leave you with is that this is just the first program in a, in a long line of EPA funding programs that we're going to be seeing. There was, as, as my friend mentioned, significant funding allocated, $5 billion allocated to the EPA to help fund the transition to electric school buses in the bipartisan infrastructure law. That'll be over a five-year period. So this is really just the first piece of that, the first 10% of funding in this, this current rebate program. So even if you were to submit an application and not, not get selected, if you were to miss the deadline this time around, there's plenty more coming. There's also a $27 million at the state level that the Illinois EPA has committed to investing in electric school buses. So just a lot of support in, in trying to ensure that school districts feel confident in making these investments, that now is really the time to be thinking about this, to be looking at it, to be researching it, to be planning for it and, and hopefully making those investments that are going to give us a, you know, a cleaner, healthier climate for our kids, for our community, for our planet. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Brian Mitchell?
Hello. So I am a resident in Schaumburg, alumni at Schaumburg High School, class of 87. My kids both go there. My son graduated, my daughter's still going there now. And I am sent as a representative of about 100 people. So instead of 100 people coming here and kind of overwhelming the space, they all said, hey, let's just send this guy. That's me. So some of my questions come from me, some of my questions come from them or whatever. So one thing I would like to address, I didn't know that we were going to have a discussion about electric buses. So I'll give you a little background of myself. One thing is that I'm a diesel mechanic. I have a jet car that goes over 300 miles an hour. I'm very familiar with what diesel does and how it operates and how, what the thermals do. Science is my thing. And even though it's, it's kind of a noble idea to think that if you had electric buses that it's going to run cleaner, but the fossil fuels that charge those buses are being used somewhere else. So there's no, there's no savings on any emissions. Okay? You're just taking the emission out of the bus and you're putting it over here at the electric facility that's generating the power to charge the bus. Not to mention, there's a couple of things from a mechanic's standpoint, and I'm also a licensed electrician, so I'll tell you about the electrical side too. There's two problems with electrical buses. First one is the batteries. There's a, been a rash of fires that burst out on public buses. They, that bus just catches fire. The battery has a shortage in it. Something goes wrong and the bus catches fire very, very quickly. And you'd have students running out of the bus, probably like, I don't know how many times that happens in a diesel bus, but that's happening quite often in public buses. So my suggestion is, as a board, before you make a decision, look into that. The other thing is, is the chemicals that are involved in the lithium batteries that they use for these things. There are chemicals that are very, very toxic, way more toxic than diesel. And so the kids are riding around basically on a toxic bus that seems clean because on the outside it seems clean and some people think it's going to be clean, but I'm, I assure you, it's very, very toxic. The other thing to consider is that we live in Chicago and our roads are covered in salt in the wintertime and all those electrical connections underneath the bus are going to get corroded. And when you have corrosion, you're going to generate heat. That's science. So follow the science on that one. I guarantee you it will happen. That corrosion gets on any of those contacts and those electric motors that move the bus, they will generate heat and that leads to fire. That's the thing for the bus. What I was actually sent here for was more about the school shooting that happened in Texas. The people were asking me to ask you about what could be done to make the school safer in our area, so that doesn't happen here because they're very, very concerned about it. You know, obviously gun-free zones don't stop shooters. They don't follow the law. They don't follow the sticker that says no gun with a slash over it. They walk right in and they start shooting. So the people, again, this is not just me, this is a group of people, so I'm kind of pushed to the front to ask the question, so just understand that. They want to know like, is there going to be any added security? You know, maybe armed security or something? I mean, we guard money with guns. We guard presidents with guns. We guard politicians with guns. Why don't we do that for our students? You know, I'm not saying the teacher should come in and it should be Yosemite Sam or the Wild West, but they're saying like, why don't we have professionally trained people that are held accountable? You know, because like what we saw in Texas is that the police showed up and stood outside while the kids were getting picked off. You know, so obviously we can't necessarily, I love the police, don't get me wrong. I back the blue 110%. I don't know what happened. Obviously they were told not to go in and that put our student, you know, put those students at risk. And so the group is asking if there's something we could do for that. The other thing is that they asked was, why are there tampon dispensers in the boys' bathroom? Like, why is that a thing?
You have one minute remaining.
No problem. Is there any way to get an answer for that? Or?
If you leave your name and phone number with Mr. Teniper, we'll be able to get back to you. The superintendent will get back to you.
Okay, no problem. But like, most people didn't know that that was a thing. And again, like I said, I'm the person pushed in front, so it's not all coming from me. I'll leave a name and number and then do that too. But in to wrap up, all I can say is that before you switch to electric buses, it's not just cost. There's a lot of science involved with that that people don't understand. And again, I, I didn't, I only picked up on that from the earlier conversations here and just like these things are running through my head that these things are not as safe and they're not as clean as you think they are. They seem like it on the outside. When you start working on them, you find out real quick that that's just not the case. Not to mention that the cost is extravagant, especially if you go to replace one battery, you're basically replacing the whole bus. Because it's not like you just replace a battery in your gas car where you just $100, you put a battery in it and your car runs again.
Your speaking time has ended.
Thank you. They'll replace the bus. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mitchell, if you suggest to your colleagues, take a look at our last board meeting, because we did talk about school safety, and Mr. Schumacher did bring up some information in what we're doing and what we're going to continue doing. So we are going to, safety is extremely important, and we will continue. But take a look at our prior board meeting, because it is taped, and we do address some of the safety concerns.
And where would, so if it's taped, is it online or something, or is it late?
Yeah.
On YouTube.
Okay, thank you. All right. At this time, then, we'll move on to presentation, and we have the presentation for the strategic plan Forward Together.
Tonight, I am joined by Assistant Superintendent Kurt Teniper and Director of Communications Erin Holmes. It is our pleasure to review the development process of the strategic plan and present the strategic plan and its components to the board tonight. The three-phase process was designed and implemented by the Steering Committee and the Board of Education with the assistance of Jason Stricker from the Inside Education Group. Phase one began in November with the Steering Committee, who you hear more of tonight, including parents, students, staff, board members, and community members, beginning their monthly meetings, and the community being surveyed for input on areas of focus. Phase two included more input gathered from focus groups, and the board began reviewing priorities and input from the survey focus groups and Steering Committee. We concluded with phase three with strategy and target development for each priority that was occurring, board discussions, and final design development, which brings us here tonight. This is the first page of the plan. 211 Forward Together represents what the Steering Committee identified as a representation of a five-year focus on change while being a part of something bigger than just themselves. It represents the large number of people who volunteered their time to be involved with this plan development, bringing us to this point and forward into the future.
While this process was driven by a phenomenal steering committee, which was mentioned and we'll talk about in a moment, I did want to briefly recap the ways in which you, as a board of education, were engaged in the process. So we did have two board members, Mr. Kramer and Mrs. Klimkowitz, joining us as members on the Steering Committee, as well as, of course, monthly status updates, the board workshop that you participated in, and then the past three board meetings for further discussion. In terms of our Steering Committee, whose names you see on this slide and the subsequent one, we had representatives we had initially identified as staff, students, parents, and community members. What was fantastic, though, was that each one of them actually brought more than one role to the table. So teachers were also future parents in our district. Community members were also alumni. Board members had District 211 graduates. Parents were alumni who had lived in the district, and so on. And so they were able to really do this work and help set priorities, looking simultaneously through multiple lenses that ensured we were able to develop a plan that would truly serve the entire district. We also had student voices as part of this. You can see them in some of the images throughout this presentation. And I know all involved would agree, their professionalism and input was second to none and really was now standing part of the process. The group worked incredibly collaboratively with respect for each other and the district's mission and values. And they were able to run most of the focus groups themselves, and we'll discuss those in a moment, and the entire time had their eyes set on making sure our entire learning community's future was filled with purposeful opportunity. I do want to take a moment and recognize and thank any of them who may be, I don't think any are with us here tonight, but may be watching on the live stream, so if they are, thank you very much. To take a look specifically at some of the, a couple of the numbers behind the process. So we did host 30 focus groups in person and via Zoom, representing various facets of our community, from parents, staff, and students at each of our schools, to Harper College, staff and students, elected officials, community members, and senior citizens. We also had two conducted entirely in Spanish. This provided the opportunity for our stakeholders to review the mission, value, and early drafts of the plan, and able to dive into that both from a graphic design standpoint and a content standpoint, and then collaboratively have dialogue with their peers about what worked and what might be done a little bit better. We had 34 Steering Committee members, which we just discussed. And finally, all in, we had more than 1,500 individuals represented in the creation of this plan. That includes all who took the community survey referenced in December and all who participated in the focus groups. They were engaged and enthusiastic. Of course, with so many thoughts and opinions, as you understand, we had to focus in on the ones we kept hearing, right? So through the process, the Steering Committee really zeroed in on the things identified as trends and the opinions we kept hearing throughout the process. To that point, we worked purposefully through the process and used some guiding principles to ensure that we stayed on point. Three of these are shown here. First, Skills for Success took a hard look at what skills we want our District 211 graduates to possess as we prepare them for their futures. We want to ensure this plan truly creates a path for all of them and creates opportunities for them to leave ready. These skills were aligned with our student readiness plan. Second one, Forward for All. It was imperative to us, we ensure this plan addressed the district, all, I'm sorry, all District 211 students, and meet each of them where they are and help each realize their full potential. While it certainly is a district plan, we recognize that it also is intended to engage the work within our schools and all of their individual cultures and legacies. And finally, Implementable. We needed to create a plan that challenged us and spurred innovative, creative growth over a full five years. Yet we also wanted to make sure the goals were measurable and achievable, as you will see as we go on.
So with these filters in mind, the Steering Committee set to the task of identifying and categorizing all of the priorities that arose through the engagement of the various stakeholder groups. They were able to apply this information to the mission and vision statements that were revised and approved by this Board of Education. As one could imagine, with so much stakeholder input, the group strived to focus the priorities and goals of the strategic plan into a manageable size and scope. Our facilitator, Jason Stricker, continually emphasized that our strategic plan would need to narrow the list of all of the areas that had been identified through focus group discussions, survey results, and other methods into a practical number of important priorities that included efforts focused on academic achievement, facility improvement, safety and well-being, and the development of an excellent staff, just to name a few. As a result of this process, the Steering Committee was able to identify 10 priorities to focus our future efforts. The first six priorities listed here, starting with involvement and continuing through equity, encapsulate our District 211 academic goals. Within the priorities of wellness and equity, the Steering Committee also included components that focused on staff needs and family and community supports. The last four priorities listed here, post-secondary success, excellent staff, facilities, and finance, and communications, have all been included in the strategic plan as a result of the resounding importance of these areas that were identified by all of the stakeholders who took part in the process. Once the priorities were identified, the Steering Committee worked to develop strategies and targets for each of the priorities. The next few slides provide examples of the kinds of strategies and targets that you'll find throughout the plan. On this slide, the target is shown before the strategies, only for the sake of slide design. As you know, the strategies, the priorities lead into strategies, and the strategies lead into targets. So in this example, involvement is a District 211 academic goal organized into four different strategies. In this case, the academic goal is mirrored in the strategic plan exactly as it looks in our academic goals. Thus, the targets listed under this priority also mirror the academic goals focusing on subgroup improvement with percentages that increase over the duration of the strategic plan. This example comes from the priority focused on facilities and finances. Targets like these reflect ongoing efforts to develop budgets that adequately and responsibly staff our schools and attend to the cycle of maintaining our aging campuses, all while maintaining fund balances without accruing debt, things that this board has long prioritized. And in this last example, from Goal 10 Communications, you can see an example of how the targets in the first year may lead to more complex layers within the priority. For example, in the first year, our targets are developed in this fashion to better inform our communities and to tell the stories of the wonderful students and staff who call District 211 home. But in subsequent years, then, we can work on expanding our audience and platforms to extend our reach in ways that benefit all people in the District 211 community.
Pending approval tonight, the plan will be shared online with media as part of the back-to-school information for students and parents, staff via the Start of the Beginning School Year Meeting with me, as well as at schools on institute days. Those meetings will include Steering Committee representatives, who are representatives from that school, and focus group participants will receive a link via email to the plan for them to see the end product of their input. The plan itself will be executed over the next five years. Each of the 10 priorities have both school and district-level connections. Therefore, there will be direct school initiatives that are put in place to achieve the targets, as well as district-level initiatives. All will be highlighted throughout the year with formal annual reports coming forward to you. The complete plan, as well as the detailed charts of strategies and targets, are attached to tonight's agenda. Though the recommended action for the board will not take place until later in the agenda, my cabinet members, including Matt Hildebrand, Director of Administrative Services, Josh Schumacher, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Lauren Hummel, Chief Operating Officer, and Gary Gorson, Chief Technology Officer, are all indirectly involved in the strategic strategies and targets and are joining Erin, Kurt, and I as we answer any specific questions you might have at this time.
Any questions of the panel?
So your preference is to go over questions, Q and A's now, rather than under new business?
If possible.
Okay.
We can certainly do both, but if possible.
I have a few of them.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Can you go back to the slide of next steps, please? Because that's going to lead into. Are we going to have a dashboard with a benchmark of where we're at right now? Okay, so we know what the starting point is. And then a periodic update of that dashboard, I don't know, one quarterly, semester-wise, that would probably make the most sense, so that we could see how we are progressing in each of the phases. The five years, I would say, Phase one is the first year, et cetera. I think that would be helpful. One thing, I really liked the strategic plan that we had, that I was given a copy of when I ran for the school board. I thought it was really good. My concern was that it was standalone, and there was no reporting on where the district was at in meeting those goals. The, so, I mean, that's a consideration. Have you thought about a dashboard, creating a dashboard and periodically updating?
We are presenting tonight the process of continual highlights as we progress in different areas along the way and a formal annual report to the board detailing each one of the strategies along the way.
I'd like to see it cumulative, you know. We're going to have statistics in most of these areas, at least on a semester basis. So we can see right away, are we on track or are we not on track? It's going to be pretty evident after semester one. The, yeah, the updates, there will be, I agree that there should be an annual review by the Board of Education to see where we're at, and the basis for that would be the dashboard. Okay, I mean, the numbers are numbers. And that's one thing that I really do like about this plan, is that there are specific target numbers in writing, so everybody can understand them. That gets into another area. The plan is a district-wide plan, but we have five schools, okay? So let's say one of the targets that was brought up was the 88% benchmark in year five for, okay. Statistically, it's conceivable and possible, I don't want to say probable, that the schools individually are going to fall in a range above and below that 88%. So how will we know where the individual schools lie?
So each August, the full, and this August, you'll receive the full academic goal report. And I'm going to let Mr. Schumacher kind of summarize how the board sees the, hears about the school data.
So each August, myself and the principals, each August, myself and the principals from each of the five schools do an academic goal report, and we will report on the academic goals that are part of this plan and show you the progress that we've made from the benchmark and also the strategies utilized in each school this year to increase that performance and also the plans for next year.
So we're going to see that this August or next August?
Every August.
So this August, we're going to have?
A very lengthy, it's almost an hour, presentation from the principals.
It's a baseline? Is that what we're looking at in August?
No. We're looking at the performance of the first-year academic goals.
Okay, so we are effectively in year one right now?
For the academic goals, yes, because the board approved that already.
Yes, okay.
And it was, went in with this plan so that could keep moving while this was being finalized and developed.
So that's, but that's just, that's a good part of it. It's a fundamental part of it, but the other is not, we won't know in August.
Because it's being approved tonight.
We haven't started it yet.
Right.
Okay, so I mean, good on part one or part A, but I think we can hit all of the bases by having the benchmarks and the dashboards updated on a semester basis. I think that will work. Yeah, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Let me follow up, if I may, just for clarification.
I have one more point. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead.
So after the semester, how long does it take to get maybe some statistics or a type of information that Mr. Kramer is asking for? Does it take like an extra month or so to get some kind of numbers? The, when you reference the semester, I presume you're referencing something that deals with academic achievement. And with that, there are semester grades. There are, some of our goals are dependent upon grades. They may not be semester-one grades. I mean, there is certainly some information at the semester. It is not for every single goal that we have.
Well, we could report on what we have and maybe develop a reporting metric for the others as we go forward. And that would be, that's my other concern, is that this strategic plan be a living, breathing document and that it be subject to modification periodically, okay?
The board can certainly always modify.
Once a year would be fine, because you really don't know where you're, it doesn't happen all at once. So I mean, I think it's conceivable that we should be able to modify the metrics, adjust them up or down. And that has not been touched upon, the ability to modify the plan as we go forward.
And we do have that ability, because depending on what's going on, what some of the information is that we get. But we will continue to get the same type of information as we've gotten previous years and maybe expand it in some way with, depending on what the board may ask for.
No, we'll see what happens in August. It may be great. It probably will be.
Any other questions? Questions?
I've got a couple. So my first question's fairly detailed, and I am in the specific two-page metrics document. So we have several documents listed there. I'm in the last one listed for board members who are paying attention to the electronic versions of this. So I'm looking at strategic plan, priorities, goals, indicators, and strategies. It's a two-page document. So I'm in the facilities and finances section. That's on page two, near the bottom. And I have a question about the third, the third section there, facilities enhancements. So in the second box over, for the 2023 So in the second box over, for the 2023-2024 school year and the targets, one of the targets listed there reads "Possible School Safety Enhancement Solution Implementation", excuse me, "Implementation Following Research Conducted in 2022-23." So my question is, since we're planning on doing that next year, what exactly is that research process that is being referred to here? And then, is it after that research process that any findings for enhancements or strategies or whatever would then come back to the board for approval?
Yes, so we are currently, the board has received information of some of the detailed recommendations that have come to us from the Police Department over the past year in terms of our drills and their presence within our buildings. We also have done an audit, a safety audit in the past, and will look to do that again this summer, if we can get our expert in for that. We also are looking at the new security technologies that are available and how they would potentially benefit our schools or not benefit our schools. All of the results of that would come forward to the board in terms of recommendation, information first, and then recommendations, should they be feasible and realistic for our schools.
So that process is going to, you know, for example, if we're able to do the audit this summer and even irrespective of whether or not we're able to get the preferred person in, we're going to be doing this research project at all of our schools?
Yes, and the technology review is happening right now.
Okay. The thing that I like about that, too, is that depending on what happens in Washington, there may or may not be a lot more funding available for any enhancement recommendations, right, that come out of that process for our district. Is that right? Yeah, perhaps. So we have some time and hopefully maybe some extra money to work with. Okay, I just thought that was interesting. Thank you for the details. And all of that, the information about that process is going to come to us as it's ongoing and the results are founded.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. My second question is to do with communications. So when I'm looking at all of these targets, almost all of them, you know, reference a dramatic increase in engagement across multiple sorts of media. And I can just say for myself, I've been able to see that ever since you've come on board, and I recognize that that is the result of a lot of hard work. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
But my question is about increasing engagement, especially by, some of these targets are pretty high for increasing our engagement across social media platforms. Like you to talk me through why that's important and what the benefits are for that goal.
Sure, specifically on engagement with audiences?
Specifically engagement in social media in particular.
I think we have recognized, well, first of all, in the first year, you'll note that one of the things we'd like to do is to establish a community advisory group. And I think we have recognized the benefit of hearing directly from our constituents how they like to receive information and what information they like to receive. And Dr. Small and I were part of a parent group that Mr. Dombrowski was also part of, that they would repeatedly mention that really they would go to social media to get much of their district information. Now, that is right now, and communications is a very dynamic area, and we all know that. How people are getting information right now may not be how they will get information in 2026. But these were developed now with the idea of, hopefully, with this community advisory group coming together, we will hear more from them and continue to hear, I think, I believe, that trend. And I think we will see that that is where people are turning to, to voice concerns, to ask questions, to engage in very real conversations. And I think that we need to be proactive in telling our story there and sharing our message there, because if we don't do it ourselves, someone will do it for us. And so therefore, I think increasing that kind of engagement there and making sure we are responsive where we should be, proactive where we need to be, is extremely important. So we definitely, as you mentioned, made some headway already, but I think keeping our eye on those areas is extremely important.
Yeah, thank you for that. I appreciate that. And then, you know, again, in 2020, yes, 2022-23, it says here, if an app is possible financially, logistically. So that to me means like, kind of, if it's possible, so daydreaming, like, what exactly would that look like? Is it to provide a channel, a reliable channel for parents and community members and students to turn to for that first point, since you say they're already doing that? So we want to be the person or the entity that they turn to? That's what I'm assuming from this, but if you'd talk me through what that might look like?
What the app might look like?
Or like, what the purpose of it would be?
So again, actually, in some of those meetings that Dr. Small and I had with the parents, they often actually referenced an app, which was, to be honest, a little surprising to me. I have not previously heard parents at the high school and higher levels asking for an app. So it wasn't immediately on our radar in the communications team this year. However, it became clear that parents liked kind of a one-stop shop, if you will, and they preferred it to, and this was actually a specific question that was asked, it just a very responsive website, right? So we do already have a very responsive website where you can go to our website on your phone and you will see our website on your phone. They did very much like the idea of an app that would give them things like late starts, specific dates that they were interested in, maybe even menus, if I recall, different things like that. They felt it was, again, a one-stop shop. However, I think you could also expand on that and do a lot of different storytelling things that would also provide us great opportunities to push out our message. And do so, frankly, most apps provide the ability to do so in pretty much any language, usually up to 100 different languages that would support that are families across the district.
Great, thank you. That was it for me.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a few. With the communications regarding English and Spanish, why are we stopping there for our goals over the next five years?
Sure. So definitely not stopping there. English is, I'm sorry, Spanish is definitely, right now, the second most common language in District 211 homes by a long shot. We constantly keep an eye on that. The Mass Notification System, the board did approve already, and we're grateful for that. Will be coming on board soon and has the ability to translate into, again, I believe, close to 110 different languages, and those are identified, parents, when they register, identify their home language. So it will automatically translate to the language of choice. So it is not just Spanish in that sense. While that system specifically was originally designed for email, and that was our thought behind it, it actually gives us the potential to do a lot of different communication translations across the board in different ways. So Spanish was identified initially as perhaps an example or a starting point, given the large number of Spanish speakers we have, but we certainly have the ability to go beyond that, and we recognize the importance of doing so.
Okay, I'm just looking at the document provided as a metric indicator. So if after five years, all we have is English and Spanish, that says we met the goal. So it seems like the bar's a little low, that's all.
Sure, understood. So you're looking at the second one about the subtitling specifically?
Well, the subtitling, too, when you go to YouTube or our website and try to turn the subtitles on for the board meetings, those are also locked out. And I think that's by our process right now, so I'm not even sure if we're allowing that to happen right now. But that would be a good goal, to have the subtitles available.
We definitely will continue beyond Spanish, so that's a great point. Thank you.
Right, and to Ms. Cavill's point about the app, if the feasibility of that app is found to be prohibitive, Years 3 has implementing an app. So if we, the implementation is contingent, right, on that?
And that goes to the living document. I mean, this is not, as Mr. Kramer said, this is not written in stone, and the board would see this officially and formally each year. And if there was an issue, we would certainly look for updates at that point.
Right, and the whole point of the strategic plan is to set targets for the administration. So I don't want to create targets in Year 3 that in Year 2 aren't viable. And so just clarifying and just reading the document as presented. Regarding the academic goals for accelerated coursework, we're at a C for the benchmark. How did we come to the determination that we want our students at a C in order to determine success?
Sure, so I just want to clarify this. The academic goal portion of this was brought to the board in August and again in December. And that part was discussed. Those goals came and were, part of the development process was to look at how the district is held accountable by the state and our accountable bodies. And so really, there are three specific ways. It's ESSA, or the Every Student Succeeds Act, right, which is federal and state. There's the College and Career Readiness Indicators, which were developed by the state, and then also the Illinois School Report Card. And so the C or better is referencing those plans. And that's why we brought the C or better into those parts of the goal.
Sure, and as a parent, community member, board member, I would like to exceed the state standards, and I would hope that other board members would agree and would advocate for something higher than just the state minimum. So that is why, you know, I'm constantly bringing it up in December and August and today.
Sure, and I would say it's not a state minimum, more than it's a research-based correlation between a C or better in that type of rigorous coursework and being successful in the entry-level college courses. And so there's been a significant amount of research done nationwide by many different groups, and that they've identified that score range as the success range.
Sure, C or better, and I'm happy with better. So thank you. I appreciate the response. For college and career readiness, you know, is there a difference between our college-ready students and our career-ready students, and are we capturing that? And if after five years, 12% of our students still aren't meeting that goal, I feel like that's low. I think we should be trying to, again, move forward with all our students. And if our goal is to accept 12% not meeting a readiness standard, that seems to almost conflict with the idea of all students.
If you can address the college and career readiness between college and career, and then I'll address the goal setting.
If you look at the, sorry, if you look at the plan as a whole and specifically the post-secondary readiness part of it, one of the things that we want to do is ensure students have a four-year plan with us and then a plan for what's going to happen after us. And we recognize that individual students and families make choices about their post-secondary plans. Some of them will choose college 100% of the time, others of them will not. And so we want to make sure, when we say all District 211 students, we want to make sure everyone has a plan. Our preference and what we strive for is that every student is college and career-ready, right? And there are certainly, in the research, different skill sets for what that looks like. So for college-ready, most organizations deem college-ready as the ability to succeed in entry-level college courses. And that's identified through academic coursework and mostly grades that students get, sometimes test scores, but mostly in the grades and GPA. Career readiness really means the ability to directly enter a career and then be successful and move up in that career. And so we're really not talking about, we want to have a student graduate and go in an entry-level career position and stay in that. We want them to have the skills, we want them to have the knowledge, the dispositions. And I would say specifically, when we talk about career readiness, there are some very technical skills that we are teaching and allowing our students to practice that put them ready for specific careers.
The, when we presented the district academic goals, we took the baseline data that was presented to you at that board meeting and then set targets to move forward with that. Certainly, we would ideally love to have 100% in every single one of our areas, and that's what we strive for, but we need immediate benchmarks for moving forward.
Yeah, I think you'll know in Year 1 if the numbers are realistic or too high or too low. How do we get handy-dandy 8 or 11 by 14 prints out of this stuff? Because it's really hard to read it electronically. The staff has them, it's easier than...
Certainly, we can get you a copy of those. You just got to wear your glasses like me to read them.
Well, here, the, you know, the electronic copy, you make it big and you know... So those things are handy.
Mary Sue's making note of it right now, I can see.
Can you make them glossy?
For a price, absolutely.
We're already paying for that.
All right, any other questions?
Comments?
Right.
Thank you very much for the presentation. That brings us to the next item, which is the Consent Agenda. Does any board member wish to pull an item from the Consent Agenda? Okay, if not, then the recommended action is that the Consent Agenda be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right, that takes us to the Freedom of Information Act request, and it's an information item. The next is the 2022-2023 Tentative Budget, the Illinois Municipal Retirement, Social Security, and Working Cash Funds. That is an information item also. If anyone has any questions, Dr. Small?
Over the next several months, the Business Office will be preparing the 2022-2023 Annual Budget. Tentative budgets will be shared by fund with the board tonight with a tentative budget for IMRF Social Security Fund and Working Cash Fund. It is anticipated that the Transportation Fund will be on the July board agenda, and the ONM Fund and Educational Fund will be presented with a tentative budget as a whole at the August board meeting. At the August board meeting, the board will take action to allow for public inspection of the budget for 30 days prior to its adoption at the September meeting. The budget is required to be adopted by September 30th of each year.
I just had one quick question regarding that. I know that with the, with the Social Security and IMRF Fund, whatever we levy has to go in there and stay, there's not a transfer mechanism for that, so I appreciate that. Within the letter that we received, it was noted that adjustments will have to be made in order to lower future years' revenue and fund balance. And my question is, what will be the proposed adjustment for the 2022 levy? Is it a reduction in the overall levy to reflect the growth of the fund balances? Is it a reallocation under the PTEL cap that we should anticipate? Looking at our variance report in our consent agenda, we're at $30 million surplus when we were budgeting about $16 million surplus at this time. So I'm curious as to what that adjustment might look like.
Yeah, certainly. The, if you're looking at the budget that's in front of you this evening, the tentative budget, you'll notice that there is a surplus that's planned. That surplus is the direct result of two components, really. One, our IMRF expense is $1 million less than it was last year, and that is the result of our employer rate and the amount that we are paying for the salaries that are paid for out of the IMRF fund. That is a great news story that that went down. At the time, when we prepared and approved the 2021 levy, that amount was set based upon what our anticipated costs were. So it's a good problem to have in that regard. So what our proposed change is, is that, moving forward, as we start to look at the 2022 levy and what we're showing in our projections right now, is that that amount would be shifted. Right now, we've levied two specific levies into that fund, one for Social Security, one for IMRF. We would shift those funds into only the Social Security line item so that those kind of rebalance the fund balance within the fund for the specific costs that are expended. We would not, as of today, when we're looking at our projection, we are not looking at a levy that would be allocated for IMRF expenses under the 2022 levy.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, a comment. One of the things that was difficult for me when I first got on the board was to understand how the different funds meshed together. And it finally dawned on me that, oh, we have a report for that. It's the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Other Financial Sources. So can you provide, at the beginning, I guess, next board meeting, can you correlate that, can you give us the big picture first? Okay, rather than what, rather than by fund, one at a time? So we can see, I mean, do you develop the budget one category at a time? Or do you... Or do you, or do you already prepare it, and you kind of know what it's going to be?
I would say that we are, there is ongoing development in every fund of the budget right now. The funds that are presented to you have, they are easier to prepare and finalize ahead of time because we have the information that's known. Once we get to the end of the fiscal year, we will be able to have actual data for the entire year that we're using to compare against certain areas of categories of expenditure for the coming year. There are also certain numbers that we just don't know until later in the game. So that's why the budget is provided by individual fund to the board. It's to be able to give you a snapshot at a point in time with the entire budget then presented in August.
Can you just asterisk the ones saying, this is projected? It's not, it's not what we're proposing right now? I think we have to understand that you have to see the big picture first, and then it helps to think the process through in each, in each individual category. Because we have to allocate the funds, right?
You will. And there's no, there's no action tonight. It's just to provide information with the specific details. But certainly, as we move forward next month with the target of providing the board with the Transportation Fund, we'll be able to look at the specific items that are included in that budget for that fund. Again, and then look at all of the funds combined with the specific details broken out, both in presentation format as well as in written format as we move to August. Again, looking at it with 30 days to review and before adoption in September.
We can send out to the board in the next board letter at least the budget from last year, which may give board members who have not seen this frequently the full reminder of what the full budget is going to look at like. We cannot present the other funds yet. They are not fully vetted yet to present. So we are still working through those components. I mean, we are still finishing our hiring in terms of the salaries for the Education Fund. There are the minutia that we have to go through. We have, we are continually working on it that now. That's why they get presented in this way.
I can live with tentative, knowing that it's tentative, okay? I think, I mean, we already know some of this stuff, don't we? I mean, for the Educational Fund, we just did a contract, right? So we probably have the, a pretty good idea of what that's, what that budget's going to be.
Yeah, I think the best tool to assess against at this point would be our projection, the financial projection that was provided. But again, some of the fine details and the nuances, for example, the bids that were awarded tonight, many of those are items that will be in next year's budget. So we will take the actual cost of those and place them in the budget.
Can you go over the projection again? Could you do that for the next board meeting?
We prepared a financial projection, I believe, in April, so we can certainly share that with the board again.
And that projection was for next year?
It's a five-year projection, so...
That's a good place to start. You know, it's, there's a lot of detail. Apologize for not remembering that we saw that. You know, that, I think that alone would satisfy my desire to see the big picture first rather than trying to piece together the minutia and the detail, you know, three months in a row.
And, Mr. Kramer, would it be helpful, I mean, going in and seeing Lauren and maybe going through some of our budgets? That might be helpful and clarify because there's so many things going on between our capital improvements, life safety, the hiring of employees, all of those things, you know, factor into that budget, so everything changes.
Yeah, I don't think it's just me. I certainly wish that we still had the Finance Committee. That would be helpful, too.
You're more than welcome to, I'm sure Ms. Hummel would welcome you there and go through everything. Okay. Any other questions in regards to that?
In previous board meetings, multiple board meetings, we've discussed potentially altering the safeguard minimum for our school district budget as a school board, the 33 and a third, 33.3% for the reserves. Is that something that now would be a time for us to have those conversations and discussions with regards to the upcoming budget process? If we were to want, as a board, to change that figure?
So that is policy. So I would suggest that, and make sure that the voice of all board members are heard, that would be discussed under a potential topic for future discussion where it would go to the Policy Committee to be reviewed to come back here, if that's what the board wants to happen.
I think that's the way to start it. But some, I don't know how we do it because of Olma, but there would have to be some sort of a, maybe Mr. Schumacher can do it. Here is what I, as administrator, with the administrators, think that the fund minimum should be, and perhaps make that part of the draft.
So what I'll do is I'll bring it up at the appropriate time in the agenda.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, then that takes us to, there's no unfinished business. Then the next item is the Employee Assistance Program Provider. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the continuation of the Employee Assistance Program services to be provided by Workplace Solutions from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2024, at a cost of $18.48 per employee for an annual cost of $37,884 per year, and authorize the Board President to sign the contract with Workplace Solutions for these services. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
If I may, very briefly. The district's EAP program, or Employee Assistance Program, provides clinical referral services and assistance with challenges common to our employees that may impact their attendance and effectiveness for their workday, such as caring for older parents, childcare services, and legal and financial consultation. It is an effective way for our district to confidentially connect our employees with outside assistance when needed.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
I appreciate that this is a fee that actually went down in cost. Seems to be a rare occurrence these days, so appreciate that.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
The next recommended action is that the Board of Education adopt the strategic plan as proposed. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay. If there's no further discussion on it or questions, then a roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
The next item is, the recommended action is that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution to reappoint Barbara Peterson as school treasurer and Lauren Hummel as assistant school treasurer of Township High School District 211 effective July 1, 2022, and further secure treasurer bonds as presented for a combined total of $30,496. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay. If there's no discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
That takes us to, the next recommended action is that the Board of Education continue the self-insured program for health and dental benefits for the 2022-2023, and retain Blue Cross and Blue Shield to provide claims administration services for medical, dental, and utilization review, and further to purchase aggregate and specific stop-loss insurance from Blue Cross Blue Shield at a level of $350,000 as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay. If there's no discussion, roll call.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
That takes us to, the next recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the recommendation to select Jostens as the yearbook vendor for Palatine, William-Fremd, James B. Conant, and Schaumburg High Schools, and that Walsworth be selected as the yearbook vendor for Hoffman Estates High School. Further, that the contract period of three years with the ability to extend for an additional one-year period be approved. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
The three-year term applies to both vendors for both Hoffman and the other four schools, correct?
Yes.
Is there a specific reason Hoffman has a different vendor?
Yes. The yearbook sponsors were allowed to choose their vendors, and they have had a longstanding relationship, and each school creates and a little bit different style of a book and fit to the culture of the school. And so they prefer to go with that vendor.
Is affordability one of the things that each school considers in picking a vendor? I mean, I've had conversations with the affordability or lack thereof of various yearbook products from a couple of our schools. Is affordability at least a metric?
It is a metric. It's one of the strongest metrics, and not just in the selection of a vendor, but in the determination of how the book is constructed. For example, more color pages is going to be more, right? So...
That hasn't changed from me editing my yearbook.
Right. Yes. You know, then. So we look at that each year as we go to create the product for each school, and certainly are cognizant.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
The next recommended action is that the Board of Education hereby accept the sale price of the property at 12N455 Burner Drive, Elgin, to Shavkar Iskov and Jordana Abdaanova for the amount of $746,500. Further, that the board authorize the superintendent or designate to sign any documents for or on behalf of the board to consummate this sale. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Move the table. I think this needs to be, I think it's one of the items that has not been discussed yet.
It's open for discussion right now.
Well, I mean, but it was, I think we were going to talk about it in closed session. We weren't...
No, no.
Okay, I apologize.
No, this is, you know. You had received information about the sale.
Okay.
But it's not a closed-session item. Is there any discussion? Dr. Small, is there anything you would like to add?
The District 21 Building Construction Program provides a one-of-a-kind experience for our students to build a house from start to finish across two years. Tonight, when we bring forth the sale of the beautiful home that was built on Burner Road in Elgin, the current real estate market has allowed for an immediate interest in this house, as it was just recently posted on the MLS on May 13th.
Okay. Any questions? All right. If there are none, then may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
The next recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the preapproval form for future expense reimbursement for Anna Klimkowitz to attend the triple-I conference November 18th to 20th, 2022, as submitted. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I just have a point of clarification. It appears that the request form is different for different board members. I think we're supposed to use a standardized form. I think the one we had approved for Mr. Rosenbloom is in a different format than the one that Ms. Klimkowitz has submitted.
We have an electronic form that is sometimes used, and that is the, if the board member submits that to us, we take care of that. Ms. Klimkowitz was actually in the office when we created that form for her.
Okay. I was just looking for a standard format. I think our policy requires that we have a standard form, so I think they're different. But that's fine.
This is the one that we've been using all for the last number of years, and I know that we've got one that's kind of been updated. But this is the one that I've submitted. I don't expect any kind of mileage or anything of that nature, and I think the other one had some mileage on it. So... Okay. Any other discussion or questions? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Present.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
All right. That brings us to potential topics for future discussion.
I have a couple. So first, I'd like to start by asking if we could have added on, as an item for future discussion at an upcoming board meeting, potentially changing our reserve policy with regards to the minimum amount that we have designated as a threshold and safeguard for our district.
Okay. And are you suggesting higher or lower?
Up for discussion.
Okay. Okay. Let me get a consensus then from the board if they would like a discussion in regards to that. Mr. Bradley?
I'm up for discussion because we haven't set in a baseline or anything with that, so...
It's been a long time. It's been, I don't remember when that was set. That was a number of years ago. Okay. So you're in favor, Mr. Kramer? A discussion?
Yeah, I guess what the numbers that we're going to disagree on will come out then.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Dombrowski?
Is there any preparations required from the administration?
Um...
And how much effort? I mean, that's part of the discussion for putting things on the agenda item, is how much effort we're expecting from our administration, and if it would be cumbersome.
Dr. Small, would you be able to put something together or give us some board input as to what reserves should be, what's normal, what some expectations are, things like that?
It would be helpful, depending on the timeline of the board, that the discussion occur, it is extremely helpful to us, whether the board consensus, if it's to go forward, is whether we're going up or down. I mean, otherwise, we're, we are doing a lot of work to prepare something where we don't have any guidance on what the board direction is, if they want us to go forward.
I have an idea. So we've had, we just referenced this document earlier, the five-year projections as, you know, a big-picture item. I would suggest, and knowing that this is going to take some preparations, but I think in order to have a discussion that goes anywhere at all or is helpful to anyone, that we would essentially look at a document that would include those projections, as we've already seen them previously, and then what those projections would look like at a number higher, and what those projections would look like at a number lower than the reserve. And I think what also would be helpful, this is one of the things I went to the conference for specifically, was to see kind of what other districts have in terms of policy about their fund balance minimums. And there's a lot of different ways that districts around us do that. I would suggest that it would also be helpful for that discussion to pull some of our typical comparable districts. So, you know, 214 comes to mind, other districts that we typically look to, like, for example, in a lot of different financial matters that come under our purview, look to similarly-sized districts and pull their policies, all of which should be public information, to see what their policies about fund balance minimums look like. what their policies about fund balance minimums look like. So that way, we can compare, not just financially speaking, but we can also make a comparison purely on policy. And I think that would help us to have an informative discussion that we could then potentially send to the Policy Committee, should we decide to make any sort of proposed changes.
Madam President, I haven't answered your question regarding the superintendent's feedback. I do understand that the administration is usually comfortable with about a 40% fund balance based on historical deliverables. I also note that if you go to the Cook County Treasures website and you look at their 20-year trends, the debt-to-property ratio for 211 is much lower than even the Village of Schaumburg or some of the other surrounding comparable districts. So, Madam President, I would recommend and strongly encourage us to take a position of innovation and leadership and not look to others for what we're doing for our fristical stability, because I do believe what we have been doing and the decisions that we've been making in some regards has put us in a position where other districts should be looking to us and not us looking to them.
Okay. Feedback from other board members. What are your thoughts?
A point of reference, the balance sheet, the fund balance in the last two years has increased from 126.6 million to 175.274 million. It's going up.
Okay.
Okay, that's a point.
That would be part of our discussion.
Right. So I'm saying is, we have kind of a benchmark right here. We have a snapshot of where we're at. You may not have to do it. I think this little graph here probably provides enough information to base a discussion on, without any staff work at all.
Mr. Rosenbloom, what were you kind of thinking when?
Well, in some of our discussions, we've seen where our fund balance has gone up or it's higher at certain times of the year, be it in the middle or at the end, and it's higher than our threshold. And we've had discussions around, number one, why is it? And number two, is there anything we can do about that that we would feel comfortable, either changing our budget and the way we spend money or the way we seek revenue that would still keep us in a safe place, right? Because when we talk about that 33.3%, the discussion ends up being around something specific. And so it tends to be, is it okay to lower that percentage?
Can I get you to give me something specific instead of discussing it? Okay.
So whether or not we might feel comfortable as a Board lowering the safeguarded minimum.
Okay, then I think that that's a conversation that we need to have then as a Board, maybe with limited input from the superintendent or provide us things that you think might be helpful. Because on the other extreme is, instead of lowering it, maybe it does need to be raised, given the economy and inflation and things of that nature. So I would support a discussion.
And another discussion is maybe more...more regular discussion about the minimum, right? Because I know I've been on the Board for three and a half years and it was in place before I came on the Board. Things change, right? The district changes, certainly the economy changes, our community changes. So maybe this is something that we can also discuss on a frequency of reviewing this policy.
Okay, so discussion at a future date of the policy, whether the reserve policy should be upper or lower. Mr. McGowan, I didn't get your input. Would you be in favor of a discussion in regards to it?
Yeah, you started with me. Yes, absolutely.
Wait, did I go backwards?
I don't think you got us all.
I don't think...did Pete, did Mr. Dombrowski say?
Mr. Dombrowski, I'm sorry, I got sidetracked there.
Yeah. No, I'm in favor of the discussion, but I think it's important that what we task the administration would be focused. I don't think we need an assessment of surrounding districts.
Dr. Small, can you...is there something that you can provide to the Board, as you've heard some of the comments?
Certainly.
That would help us, guide us? Is this for July? Does it have to be for July?
No.
Can it be...okay.
It can be in August.
Whatever is going to fit into your time-wise and that might be appropriate in talking about the budget.
I'd also like to clarify that looking at what other districts have done does not mean that we're not innovative, but other districts have policy. I'm not super interested in the financial comparison. This is a matter of policy as well as a financial question. So I know that there are some districts, for example, that set a minimum fund balance and/or maximum even and say that, you know, if the fund balance at any time exceeds this percentage, that triggers an automatic discussion at the Board level about how to remedy that situation. That's a matter of policy. That does have financial implications. So I'm not saying one way or the other, whether I'd like to do that, but I am saying other districts have policies that look very different from ours. And I think it is helpful to see what those policies might look like. And you know what? We might look at those and think that none of those would have any relevance or have any ideas for any of us to incorporate.
And it probably wouldn't hurt to be able to have that information.
I would recommend we cap that at, you know, maybe five policies be presented. And I don't think having an open-ended chase to find an infinite number of policies, Madam President, would be beneficial for Board discussion.
No one suggested that. I was thinking usually it's about two to three real comparisons in other previous matters.
And some of our surrounding districts that are here.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Can we continue with the consensus feedback from Mr. Dombrowski and Ms. Cavill?
Mr. Rosenbloom, is August okay with you?
August is fine.
Sure.
Or would August work for the superintendent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
For the discussion.
For the discussion.
We'll put forth together some items. I have a list.
Okay, I think I've been sidetracked here. So, all right, who did I miss?
No one.
No one.
Everybody?
Okay. All right, so we will look at that then. All right.
I have another item that I'd like to bring up. This evening and earlier, we've heard from members of our community directly via social media, email, and during public comments, expressing concerns about the safety and security of our schools. This is a priority we all share as Board members, parents, caregivers, staff, students, and others. Our District 211 value statements include that our district values safeguarding the welfare of all by providing a positive and respectful environment. It also includes cultivating the healthy, physical, social, and emotional well-being of all. In support of this, our district must do all we can to ensure the safety and security of our facilities and those who are taking part in our programs and activities. I realize there were meetings and discussions earlier this year between local law enforcement and district administrators on safety in our schools and partnerships with local police departments. Since then, we have seen weapons and fights in our buildings, additional school shootings, and community concerns. I know I hear from students in our district fearful about going to school, staff about going to work and educating our students, and parents about the safety and well-being of their children attending our schools. I believe we must act now to respond to these fears. This Board of Education is made up of seven members of the community, including parents, grandparents, businesspeople, and educators. I think we need to act to further review, consider, and recommend potential changes or improvements to our safety and security within our district. I realize that there has been a community advisory group and that there's a technology review audit currently underway. I would like to request that at our next board meeting, we discuss creating a committee made up of our superintendent, members from school staff and students representing each school, and at least two Board of Education members, to meet and review our current safety protocols and measures, solicit and consider additional feedback from others within each group type and the community, discuss possible alternatives, and bring recommendations for potential changes or improvements to this Board of Education. So I'd like to ask for a consensus vote, Madam President, to discuss this and a possible motion associated be on our agenda at our July board meeting.
I'm hesitant about a motion because we don't have materials or anything in front of us to be able to do that. A discussion, let me poll the Board to find out if there is a desire to have a discussion in regards to the items that you had listed.
Can we discuss before we discuss? The annual review of safety plans, protocols, and procedures and school safety drills report, which is a consent agenda item, I sent the superintendent an email. It is...it's really detailed. It's really good. There's some things in there that I agree with, some things that I would like to see happen, that the school district doesn't think should happen. But it's a really good place to start. And one of the things that I did, I asked the superintendent to schedule me for a walkthrough in a couple of schools, so I can see, translate what's on paper to what's actually there. And I think I would recommend that each Board member do that as well. That will give you...it will either build your confidence or it will shatter your confidence, okay? I think the experience will be positive. Additionally, I've done some research, because obviously this is a critical topic to the community, and I don't have a...I didn't bring it with me. There's...part of the Illinois School Code, and I can send you a copy of it, Superintendent Small, actually requires a parent teacher committee to specifically discuss items such as this and beyond that, exchanging information with the police, which is reviewed by the Board. So I will send the superintendent copies. I think it's a great idea. It needs to be done. I think we need to have a little more background, a little more hands-on observation of what we actually have in place right now. A lot of it is really good.
And keeping in mind that there's some things that we can discuss here and there's other items that we cannot discuss in public in regards to the safety. And I know Mr. Bradley is on our facility committee and he will be part of the investigating of the technology and that.
And I believe we just rejected a proposal for some of the maintenance in some of these buildings and a big component of that might have been around security in one of our previous meetings. So I think maybe that's something we would probably want to bring back to the table.
There is a component that...or a committee that is in place that I would suggest isn't one that this would be a discussion component of and has been, and that's our Student Wellness Committee. We have just launched them this previous year. They look at the physical and emotional component of the student in terms of safety. And I think that is certainly...I don't want to keep them separate from this. They belong as a part of this under Student Wellness.
Okay, so is there consensus to take a look at this? You're requesting that this be in July?
At our next board meeting, yes, to discuss creating a committee, which could be made up of a variety of different individuals or parts of the school community to discuss safety and security within our school buildings.
I don't know. The thing is, is that I'm in support certainly of an overview of where we're currently at. I think that our goal, the fact that we're going to enter into this research and previously brought up in the strategic plan, is a part of the future direction. So perhaps there's even more information available on the details of what that process would be like. Hopefully, that would be part of the discussion. I don't...I'm not in a place where I can say that forming a committee is the best course of action. I'm not sure that it is the mechanism that acts the fastest, should we need speed in making protocol changes or any such thing. So I'm certainly in favor of an overview. I had some questions, a lot of questions, and points of consideration and a related issue to this, the way we utilize our SROs, oversight of that process that fits in with this conversation. So I'm in favor of a conversation and an overview, but I can't say that I'm going to sit here and say like, oh, well, I'm currently in favor of the formation of a committee. I'd be more comfortable with that being a possibility of the outcome of the discussion that we would have in the future, if that makes sense.
I think that makes very good sense, and we can take a look at school safety as an overview and whether it's a committee or other things that might come as a recommendation from the administration.
I would also like to add that there's a reason that we are liaisons on administrative committees. If the Board creates a committee, there are certain laws that require that to be open and transparent. And if we do a committee of such, it becomes hamstrung by information that might need to be confidential as discussed to response plans and safety and things of that nature. So it may be better to leave that within the operational jurisdiction of the superintendent.
Okay.
So for that reason, I don't support a discussion to create a committee, you know, at the Board level.
Okay. All right, let me...any other discussion then?
So to Mr. Dombrowski's point, Madam President, I understand the obligation of a Board committee, but perhaps we can discuss the importance of having a committee and not, as a Board, creating one.
Right.
And then leave it to the superintendent and her administration to put a team together to do these things.
All right, let's not speculate. Let's kind of look...we're going to look at an overview of the school safety and maybe some things that we can do to enhance that and have a discussion. Well, Mr. McGowan, are you in favor of a discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Dombrowski?
I reiterate, I am not in favor of that.
You're not, okay. Ms. Cavill?
Discussion, yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yeah, I'm open for a discussion.
Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, I think we have a lot to discuss.
Okay, Mr. Rosenbloom?
Yes.
All right, and myself, so...what's the title of this discussion, please? Maybe an overview of school safety?
Safety and Security.
And...
And what information are we looking for from the administration and the effort required?
I'm not certain. What do you think that would help the Board in discussion? Things that we can share in public. We talked a little bit about, as Ms. Cavill mentioned, about school resource officers, maybe talking a little bit more about what they do and their role at the school, how they fit into the safety plan.
And I'm thinking, you know, we recently had the presentation by, you know, the comments from Mr. Schumacher at the last board meeting, I believe it was?
Yes.
Right? And perhaps an outline of those items that were shared, right? I understand that there are some things that we do as a school district that are confidential for the safety of our students and staff and people coming into our facilities. I get that. But maybe some of the, you know, the things that you had shared previously, and then we can have a dialogue. Really, that's all I'm asking for, is a dialogue, and see what we can come up with as a Board to take us forward and address some of the things that are happening.
If I might just chime in here, things that come specifically to mind are an overview of our threat assessment teams and that process, that being one of the main school safety measures that we partake in and we're a state leader on. So I think having a little bit more information, especially to share with the community and parents in particular, would be helpful, what that process looks like and how it functions. And then also, you know, like maybe perhaps more detail, basing this off your comments at the last meeting about reporting mechanisms, you know, how staff and students in particular, the different channels through which they can report suspicious behavior or behavior that makes them feel unsafe, that would then presumably kickstart the threat assessment protocol and how those function together, I think would be of particular help, right?
And to Mr. Kramer's point, you know, for us to be aware coming into that meeting, if we can, as best we can, aware of what's currently in place in our schools. Also, I did go on our website earlier today, and even on our website, there's a school security section. And looking at some of the things, some of the systems and protocols that are there can help us as a Board be prepared for that discussion.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. McGowan, go ahead.
And maybe I'll add, for community members and parents that are nervous and scared about school safety right now, one of the things we need to highlight are the things that separate us from other school districts. D211 has a lot of things in place that neighboring schools do not for as far as safety and security is concerned. And I think that would help kind of ease the concerns of community members if they knew that not only is it a focal point for the district, but we also have technology and systems in places that neighboring schools do not.
Okay, good point.
Superintendent Small, a question. When will the school district file the threat assessment tool? It's in... It's, it's in executive content.
Right, Matt, what's the time, what's our deadline on that? It's the end of this month, I believe.
So that would be, that would be helpful for, for the board members to get a copy. Okay, and then I, I, I can't really have a cogent discussion until I see, like I said, so I could translate what's on writing to what's actually happening. So I, I would, it's urgent, but I think timing and and preparation is critical. So my suggestion would be to do it in late August or early, or, or the, or the September board meeting. So, so we have facts rather than speculation.
Dr. Small, what are your thoughts on that? Does it make? Is there a difference in, in, in time wise? Would we have more information?
So we have, as I spoke to earlier, we have some review of new technologies for safety that are going on. That will be going on this summer. The involvement at, at those are, our local police are all involved in that. We have our administrators, we have staff member representation. And certainly, Mr. Bradley, part of that is the Safety and Facilities Committee. We've also invited a few of our local school districts to join us as we have that discussion and review of those technologies. The, as I stated earlier, the feasibility of adding those technologies would then come forward in terms of information to the board of the, what we found. And then the recommendation as to whether we move forward with that. I will be very straightforward. Many, many of these ideas require either additional staff with the technology or they will involve in implementation within the structures of our schools that will take time, that we cannot snap our fingers and put it into place within the infrastructure of our schools. So that is what is currently happening this summer. So when you talk about July, that might not be to its completion in July. In terms of the threat assessment, we can certainly confidentially show the board the details of the threat assessment. That is a, it will be a confidential document. So when you say speak to the threat assessment at a July meeting or July discussion, it will be very general for the public.
So regarding the technical survey and discussions that you're having right now, when do you think, when do you feel, or when do you plan to come to the board with some suggestion, you know, suggestions or additional information?
I would say in August, we will have a better idea. The, the first meeting is coming in the beginning of July.
So possibly.
September.
September meeting? Would that be more feasible with more information that can be provided?
And certainly, I don't want anyone to believe that we would, we would wait until September if there was something that we found via our audit or via our investigations that should be in place, that needs to happen quickly, we would certainly put that in place and bring that to the board.
Yeah, I mean.
Is that agreeable then with the board?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like a glacial pace, pace, but there, there are a lot of, there's a lot of detail that we have to work through the technology and the coordination. So I'm, I'm good with September.
Okay.
And to Dr. Small's point, priority is extremely high for all of us. And, you know, security and safety of our students is, is paramount. And, and so certainly this conversation, the discussion would not hold back anything that we might be able to do. So I'm fine with that.
All right. Because the more information that we have, the better we can make some decisions. So, okay, if everyone is in agreement with that, I'll leave it to, to Dr. Small to present it to us when the timing would be correct and have the most information for us.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'm going to take us into the committee reports then. The first one is NSSCO. And basically with NSSCO, we recognized a number of retirees. They were the shining stars for the meeting. Also took a look at the continuous improvement plan. And the focus there was on the innovative learning and assistive technology coaching services that are available to, to the member districts and that we definitely partake in. Also, they talked about the restraint and timeout reduction plan. It's, it's interesting that the Illinois State Board requires school districts to create the restraint and timeout overs, uh, uh, plan, but they don't request that of the special ed districts. But the special ed district, NSSCO, is developing a plan. They do have a draft of it and I will send the draft out to you. I think what was interesting is they looked at it, when they looked at that plan, they talked about polarization management, which I was not familiar with the term. And what that is, it's a, it's, it's a division into two sharply contrasting groups and then to, or sets of opinions or beliefs, different groups. And basically what they were looking at when they gave us the presentation was, right now there's more restraint and the timeout. And with the new guidance, you have to approach it a little differently and are not able to do all of those things. They had looked at, you know, having staff involvement, finding out what the staff needs are and wants, you know, looking at adopting a consistent stance, creating some common ground. And they've given a lot of thought into it. There's 19 members that are part of this oversight team that's coming up with the plan. They included the superintendent, assistant principals, psychologists, instructional coaches, educational support, teachers, paraprofessionals. And they've been meeting six times during the spring of 2022. So they do have a draft put together, which I will ask Ms. Kason to get out to, to all of our members so you can take a look at that. But it was interesting of taking a look at the two different approaches and how we need to put everything together for the benefit of our students. They also talked about participation in, well, we did vote on it, participation in a one-year agreement for equity diversity includes, inclusion planning. So there is a facilitator for that. The NSSCO budget was ratified and they've also been working on various grants to work on various things with, for the, the school district. The grants that they were able to, to get total $4,375,000. So that was, that was very exciting to be able to do that. See what that is, one moment. Some of the grants came from, from rotaries and rotary clubs, and it was absolutely wonderful. There's, there's a lot of community involvement. There's a, a grant that we had gotten that says stop school violence and it looks like social, looks at social emotional learning. There's also an, a grant from the Illinois Special Education Leadership Academy, which is $140,000 a year. So they plan on, you know, utilizing all of these grants and doing a lot for, for the students. And I think that that's, that's terrific. They spent a lot of time working on that. So that was NSSCO. That will take us to EdRed. Mr. Rosenbloom?
All right, a few things. One is I know at either our last board meeting or the one before, there was some discussion around EdRed dues and the new structure associated to it. I, and I know at least one member of our school administration had a conversation with the executive director of EdRed regarding some of our concerns associated to our slight increase in dues under the new structure that they have, which, which they have designed around the new funding, the new funding mechanisms. And my conversation with her was, you know, so, so there was a lot of discussion that they had internally around making this change to their due structure and why are they doing it? What is the impact it's having and, and things like that? And some of what they discussed was there are some school districts that have one building and they're very, very small. And, and from a funding perspective, they have very little, if any, money. And, and they're always, you know, putting in referendums and things like that just to stay operational. And the importance of those school districts having the opportunity to be a member of EdRed and be represented and have some of the, the things that EdRed does already supporting them to be a member of EdRed in that regard and having a voice. So that was part of the reason why they changed the, the model that they use. Another discussion I had was their use of the funding model, which is really a funding to schools to use as a funding model for charging schools. And my understanding on why it's a funding rule for, for giving schools money based on a variety of different parameters, but the difficulty that, that, you know, the discussion that we had around the difficulty of understanding and, and accepting in some ways, the, the funding model that they're using to charge us. So our discussion is still open a little bit. She was going back and having some more discussion and welcoming my further dialogue on that. So I want to let everybody know that I, I did contact them and had some conversation around that. And she was very appreciative and understanding of, of our concerns. Secondly, is the last EdRed meeting was on June 3rd. And at that meeting, they discussed the budget, dues restructuring and a summer series that they have going on, which I would like to share with everybody. But also they had a Director of Special Education Services at West 40, which is a program around special ed. They're a consulting organization that worked with a lot of different schools on a lot of different things. And she talked about the different resources that are available for schools and students in our area. And that was really a great kickoff to their summer series on social emotional learning. And they have a, a session, literally, it's every two weeks through the summer. They had one already on June 8th, which was Social Emotional Learning 101, which really was an introduction for, and I attended, it was great, on what is social emotional learning, right? The definitions, the resources, the involvement, the people and, and programs that support that, the importance of it, what's been going on in the world for the last couple of years and how a lot of schools, most schools are now getting into addressing those issues of their students and staff and the community. So that was the first session. The next one is coming up next week and it's Social Emotional Learning and Staffing Shortages. So I encourage if anybody is interested to register and, and attend and, and learn some great things. So it was an excellent program. That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, you have a list of the upcoming events and calendar items. The next recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, probable or eminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, and appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees or legal counsel. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, the recommended action is that the board return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call?
Okay, hold on.
Nope.
Sorry. Okay, Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill, aye. Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The next item is that the, the employee Ryan Hall be suspended for five days without pay, that the Board of Education adopt a resolution authorizing notice to remedy for Ryan Hall, and that such notice be provided to the employee by the Secretary of the Board of Education. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill, aye. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The next item is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of Sabrina Bratton effective May 2026, according to the Master Contract of District 211 Teachers Union, Elizabeth Bromelsky effective May 2027, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, Caitlin Chow effective May 2026, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, Robert Cokely effective May 2026, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, Donald Davis effective May 2026, according to the Master Contract of the District Teacher, District 211 Teachers Union, Lucia Disico effective May 30th, excuse me, effective May 2023, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 United Support Staff, Mary Flowers effective May 2025, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 United Support Staff, Susan Hess effective May 2026, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, Danielle Johnson effective May 20, May 2026, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, Stephen Kerfis effective May 2026, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, Diana Mikolsky effective June 2025, consistent with the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, and Frank Radman effective May 2023, consistent with the Master Contract of the District 211 United Support Staff. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
You have to wait for just a second. There was no sheet, so I'm having to write this whole thing down. Okay, so we have Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
It's going to be slow one. Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill, aye. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The next item is that effective August 1st, 2022, Aaron Pollock be appointed as 10-month Assistant Principal at Palatine High School at a gross salary of $116,150. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please?
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill, aye. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs., Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Okay, and if there's no other?
Klimkowitz?
Oh, aye, I'm sorry.
All right.
All right, with that, if there's no other business, then the Board President declares this meeting of the Board of Education adjourned.